The fuel markets, I talk to Dick Gata all the time and we're trying to find, I just 'cause he's one of the more knowledgeable people about the subject in town. I'm trying to find the best pricing for the town because if we actually knew how to do this, we'd probably all be on a carabiner. It's, fuel markets are very hard to gauge. But, and one thing, the fleet fuel, the actual expense from 2000, that was, the fuel was extremely inexpensive then and I think there was some billing that got put into the, well, that was the year where the prices were very low. So, this is correct, the numbers.
Right.
Basically factoring what the fuel cost is.
Right.
The amount of fuel that departments use times the unit cost of what the fuel is gonna cost and that's what this number is. It's not, it's hard to look at past years because there's a lot of variables. Usage and cost per gallon. And as I said, Town Aid Road, it's carrying 340 but I'm guessing I'm gonna get 170. That's what I'm getting this year, so.
I'm sorry, could you, could you?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's, 340 is what it's in this year's budget, 340 is in next year's budget, but the state only sent us half of it this year and said, "That's what you're getting." So, we only got 170, so I'm guessing, or I'm not a betting person, but I'm guessing we're only gonna get 170 next year. I doubt that they're gonna give us more money than this year.
It's one of those revenue neutral things, whatever we get, we spend.
Right.
Like LoSiP, we took it out of the budget 'cause...
Mm-hmm.
But why wouldn't we do that with Town Aid Roads? Why did we leave that in if we're taking LoSiP out?
Well, Town Aid, well, with regards to the LoSiP funds, those funds, those projects and costs typically overlap in fiscal years.
Right.
So, what we'll do is we will run that grant through our CNR fund. With regards to the Town Aid Road funds, those funds are typically spent within the fiscal year that they receive.
That is a difference.
And so, you know, this year, we were expecting to just receive half of it and so we're only gonna spend half of it.
We spend what we get.
So, we're gonna spend what we get. We have a projected revenue that equals 340,000, so we'll just get the half that we're gonna spend. So, the revenue and the expense will equal.
There is one thing on that line too, 'cause I know you also get reports on percentages of use through the year. We didn't know till November that we were gonna get any, so I didn't spend a penny on 340,000. And then I was told in October, we were gonna get the 340, I mean, the state was saying, and then we got 170. So, there's very little spent on that line. It's only because we didn't know till November, December, and that's the end of my construction season. So, it's not that we don't need that money, I just, we couldn't spend, I can't spend money that we don't know we're gonna get. So, we took the tact of not spending a penny on the Town Aid Road until we found out from the state. Once we found out in November, early December, that we were only getting half, which is showing up on 170. So, I think if you could see those reports, I probably only spent 7,000 of the 170, but that's not because we didn't need it. I just had to put everything off until these next three months, we're gonna be, which is all the projects that we wanna do in the fall.
But you use it or lose it, right? I mean, if you don't get, if you don't spend this, you can't carry it over to the next year?
Well, we could, but I'm assuming by coming in front of this board, but we have so many needs that we're, we're gonna use it, is our intention, 'cause there's, there's a lot of projects that we're planning on doing. And, and, you know, a good example, I mean, we spent an extra $60,000 on storm material, on salt, I probably spent. So, I already, I already made a cut, like I said, I, what was my cut, 170,000 this year? Well, 60,000 of it was from storm materials because I was gonna dip into Town Aid Road, but I didn't have Town Aid Road to dip into. So, now, our salt shed is really low. I could take the tact of keeping it really low, or I could fill it up at the end of the year, which we usually like to go into the end of the year with a shed that's at least half full, 'cause you're kinda cheating yourself if you go into the year with nothing in there, 'cause it kinda looks good on your bottom line. It's like kind of the, "Do you wanna pay me now or pay me later?" I'd rather put some more salt in there, so we start the year not in a hole.
But there's a time of year that is cheaper, I would think?
No, I tried that in the past and it doesn't. It's actually, the cost of salt for us this year was about 12% less than the prior year. So, this is a time to jump and try to load up on some more salt and I'd like to do that. Not, I don't have to get the whole year, so, but when we did that salt project, the salt dome, we gave ourselves the flexibility of being able to take more, so depending on if our budget allowed us, we could take more, 'cause it has a capacity of about 20, about a full year's capacity. It has a capacity of about 2,500 tons. Our old one has a capacity of about 800. So, it just, the town is in better shape if we have more salt there, 'cause that means next year's budget, I don't have to hit it as hard.
Okay. We ready for questions? Do we wanna start with Jason?
Let's see, I have a couple. You answered the question about the fleet fuels, I was wondering whether that was, thank you, whether it was the fuel, you know, used or cost, okay.
Yep.
You had a, I was a little confused about item number 295 and your explanation there on the tipping fees. Could you just tell me logistically what happens with these, the businesses that are bringing trash to that Preston plant and how you get reimbursed or where the reimbursement happens?
So, the $580,000 line is all the trash at the Town of East Line. Whether we pick, we pick, the Town of East Line picks up, our highway department picks up residential trash, that's in the brown can. If a business wants to put their trash in a brown can, we pick it up.
Okay.
But, this is, then to answer your question. If someone has a dumpster, so say Dairy Queen or CVS has a dumpster, they have to get a contract with a CWPM or one of these alwayses or something like that.
Okay.
They have a contract. I don't know how much always is charging them, but I do know that when always goes up to Preston to dump it, they say, "We're from the Town of East Line," and they get charged 50, and, well, we get sent a bill, we get sent a bill for that trash and then we backcharge them.
I see.
So, say they, just for easy, even in the numbers, they dump 10 tons up there. We get the bill for $580, then we then turn around, 'cause we have a $3 surcharge on it, we charge them back 61, I believe 61 or 62. This was one of the problems in the past, is we didn't have any, we just charged them back what we, but now we have a surcharge, 'cause we're doing all the, handling the money and chasing them down and so that. So, we charge them back and they then, if it's always, they owe us $61 a ton, they owe us $610 and we got charged 580.
Okay.
And then whatever they charge a business, unfortunately, I don't know.
Sure.
But it should, hypothetically speaking, it should keep the price down for the business, 'cause that $58 tipping fee is, the true cost of the tipping fee up at the Preston plant is $85.
Oh, my.
That 58 is subsidized by SCARA, 'cause SCARA is, was really smart over the years and they had that, that plant was generating electricity at a huge rate and selling it for 25 years. So, I said, "I'm the member that goes with SCARA and we're, we should be able to subsidize that for the next five to 10 years at a $58 to level the cost."
Okay.
But, it's, costs a lot more, but SCARA uses that money to keep the towns, the money down for the towns. So, did that answer your question?
Yes, yeah, thanks. And, thanks. Item 321, the safety equipment and training, what, what is the, what part of that $10,000 is for professional development training, now that you've mentioned that that's not necessarily happening?
Oh, well, when you said it on the engineer's budget, we try to go, you're talking two, two different departments.
Thanks, right.
I have 24 people on the highway side that have to have some OSHA training and have to have flagger training, so that, the other budget you're talking about was only three people.
Okay.
So, that's, when I said we don't go a lot of trainings, 'cause the guys in the office, we, we try to go, but we don't go as much. I have to send these people, so.
Okay.
I have all the projects broken down.
That's a good question.
And the question is how much it was of this training?
Yes, and I see in the narrative, you say it covers the cost of required and professional development training, safety shoes, other personnel protective equipment.
I have each of these broken down, I'm just kidding.
So, I'm looking at your, yeah, so it's under 321?
Yeah. I, I, I believe it's, I don't have the sheet that I was looking for, but the, I believe the training of that is about $2,500.
Okay.
We're required to get these guys, our employees', safety boots. Each pair is about $200, so when you're talking 24 guys, that's at least half of this number is safety boots. And then about 1,200 to 1,500 is about, is for protective gear, PPE and stuff like that. I wanna say about $2,500 is for training. And I mean, I mean, you send guys, you know, one class, $75 a guy, I mean, I had to send all my guys to get certified flagger training, coming up in May. I mean, that will, it'd be over $1,000, 'cause I had to send, I mean, all the guys on the road have to be certified, so, so it's a pretty necessary evil.
And those certifications are yearly?
The flagger is every four years, but that's just flaggers. We have to send them to bloodborne pathogens, although there are some classes that we can take through KERMA. But there's a lot of training classes that we need to send the guys to. We just try to balance it within the budget, so. In past years, there was no line for equipment, it was all taken out of municipal supplies, but I wanted to specifically identify a safety and training line, because that's important.
Yeah, that's good. I'm, I'm big on giving that detail, that's very helpful.
Yeah.
Just as is for the travel too.
I wish I had the sheet.
Okay.
Every, every one of these lines is broken down, I just don't have that sheet in front of me, but I can pass it along through Anna if she wants, but I'll break down every penny of what, how that is broken down.
Okay. I mean, generally, I have to tell you that I made a note in my notes that you had a really good narrative, so, I mean, you know, you're, you're very detailed generally, it's just there's a few things that were kinda lumped together, like the travel expenses or whatever, so, okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's it for me, for now, thanks.
Joe, help me to explain again, please. If we know that we're getting 170,000 in Town Aid Road assistance this year, even though we had budgeted 340, why are we budgeting 340, again, for Town Aid Road in this year's budget?
My, my best answer, and then Anna could chime in, is that only about a month or two ago, the state is still saying that they're gonna give us the 340, but I don't know why we have any faith that they are when they aren't even doing it this year.
Right.
So, and, and, so the 170, I'm making the assumption, but that's, you need, this budget should carry the 340, but in all reality, we're only getting 170 this year, why are they gonna give us 340 next year?
Exactly.
So, basically...
And you're also telling me that you've only spent 7,000 this year so far.
Well, I haven't a chance to...
Right. But you'll spend the remaining 163 from now until June 30th?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Public Works is...
But not more than that?
No, no, we don't go over budget.
So, you manage to what you, you're going to manage your expenses to the money that's coming in?
Yeah, this has been a difficult year, because Public Works likes to, I mean, we go from July to the end of November and then we come out of the shoots now to the end of the year. So, July to end of November, I had, I didn't know the certainty of $340,000.
Yeah.
So, we didn't, even though you saw a lot of work going on, the typical thing, here's an example, on Walnut, if anyone's driven on Walnut Hill Road, there's these orange barriers that have been up there for the last two, three years. That was a project that I was gonna go forward with. And now, I just told the resident the other day, "How's it going with it?" "Well, don't know it." That's, 'cause that's what I earmarked, that's Town Aid Road, that's a town road, it's, it's a wall that's collapsed, it's gonna cost us about 130,000, 120, it's gonna be, we're gonna put the plans together, it's gonna be bid out and so with that. I'm not even gonna waste the resources right now, because we don't have the money.
Because we don't have the money to do it.
Um...
So, it gets prioritized with other projects.
I'm sorry?
It gets prioritized with other projects.
It balances with all the other projects.
Right.
I mean, we're gonna come out of shooting, the next two weeks, we got a bunch of jobs coming up.
So, I'm really not in favor of budgeting, that we're going to receive that $340,000 in income?
Well, here's, here's what...
And, and I understand it's a wash, we're saying we're gonna get 340, our budget, expenses are 340, it's a wash, would it...
At the time we, we were, at the time we were working on the budget, the governor released his proposed budget for next year and in it, he included full funding of the Town Aid Road grant. It was subsequent to that, that the state made, made the announcement that we may not receive the second half of that funding.
Right.
For this year. For this year. So, but it was still in next year's budget.
Still in next year's budget.
To be fully funded.
Right, I, I get all that, but what's the, as Joe said, what's the likelihood? That just seems, why would they reinstate, I mean...
We don't, I mean, I don't have...
It's crystal ball stuff. It's crystal ball stuff, it's just, we're gonna have that discussion about ECS too. When they say they're gonna fully fund it this year and then we really don't know where it's gonna be, we won't know until June or May when they pass their budget, but we have to go on the assumption of some budget out there.
Right, right.
It's, it's better to keep it in.
But as we did last, I, I, I don't think I agree with that.
Well, the only thing is, is, my thought is, if, if it does come to 340 and it's in, there's a lot of needs and stuff like that, but if it comes at 170, that's all we'll spend. If we put in a 170, it comes in at 340, then you have to do a town, town meeting appropriation for 170,000 and go through a lot of extra effort for something that the state is kinda saying they're gonna do. It's like, there's no real downside to keep the 340, 'cause I'm not, if we only get 170, I don't want to spend the 170 and there's less work for this board, Board of Selectment, Board of Finance, town meeting, for all, something that, we're just, we're just hedging our bets, that, I'm just guessing that we're only gonna get the 170, but the right thing to do, because the information they gave to Anna and Mark, is to put in the 340, but just in all reality, this budget is gonna, it's gonna be even tighter, but we will manage, we will do, we just do less projects for the town, that's all the drainage jobs and the road jobs.
And the thing is, the way things have gone with the state, if they make an announcement at the last minute that, "Oh, by the way, you're gonna get 100% of the Town Aid Road grant and you don't have it in the budget," our hands are tied to spend it until we go through the appropriations process and that takes a month, a month of meetings. So, if we have it in the budget and we end up getting it, then we're in a position to, like, move through all of the projects that we have in the hopper.
So, it makes sense to be conservative, but there's too many constraints in place.
It's, it's difficult.
And I guess I feel, I feel comfortable knowing that Joe won't spend money that we don't have.
I, I don't.
But what if Joe gets another job tomorrow and somebody else comes in, "Oh, I have 340,000 I can spend in this budget."
No, 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 if the money doesn't come in, we, we don't approve the PO.
Yeah.
We also take his budget and reduce it mid-year, just like we did with the governor, who came in with 1.2 million dollars and went to Lisa Timothy and said, "I'll take it back 5%." Like that.
You could put a dummy PO for 170,000, you can't use it.
What do we call that? Encompered.
We have all these dummy POs and they're not, I mean, dummy, I just, I wish I had a better word, but it's a PO that says, "You can't use it," and it still shows up, so if we try to go in there, you can't, you can't use that money, that's the way to do it, 'cause it blocks that, your concern. And we do that, but I'm not gonna spend...
We call them open commitments and we just put this open commitment there, so you can't draw on that same account, but it's incomparable.
It's just 'cause it just knows that that's the reality.
The 22,800, the supplies and miscellaneous, did you just break that down, what it is?
Yeah. I only checked it, 'cause I, I had the whole list of it and I always have my stuff here and I don't have that, oh, there you go. That's, it's actually one of the, for a department our size, it's, it's everything that you have to do to operate, 'cause there's no other place to take, that's tools, that's, that's the cable that's at, it, I have that all broken down, I wish I had it, I can get that for the board. I have a detailed breakdown of every penny, but I just don't have it.
So, forward that, before you deliver.
That's it?
So, first, kudos on the dump thing, going from Tuesday to Saturday, you guys worked together on it.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, but I mean, we talked about it and thanks for following through and taking action, I think it's, it's a perfect solution. Nice job. On fuel, fleet fuel, so it is up 37% since the actuals for 17. So, I'd be remiss to not ask about it, 'cause that's a big increase. It feels like more than fuel has gone up and I'm just pointing it out, I don't know why it's so high.
It's, it was, it is high and I'm telling you, it's, the number we have is the right number. I don't bill the fuel, so what I, what I say by that is that we have our fuel pumps now that are much more sophisticated than the old ones that were printing on dot matrix printers only a few years ago. And so, the, all the, all the stuff comes from the fuel head, it goes to the finance department, they bill it. I'm thinking that one of the months in that year was not billed in that month, in that year, so...
Oh, so you're thinking the actuals in 17 were less? They're less reported here than you think they are, is that what I'm hearing you say?
Correct.
Joe, that was the year we locked in that super low rate though.
We, we...
Like way under market, you know, but we just hit it right, locked it in, the next day it went up 26.
Oh, yeah, we were paying, we were paying $1.60, it was 1.50, it was very low.
Okay, it, it's just, I'd be remiss to not ask the question, it's a huge increase from the actuals.
A great deal, two years ago, one of the numbers.
So, who, who are we buying fuel from?
Burke Fuel is the few people we've been using, since I've been here.
Mm-hmm.
The fuel contract's very difficult, because you buy bulks, you buy quantities of fuel, okay? So, you can't just buy fuel from, you can't buy fuel from July 1st to June 30th, it doesn't work that way, you know? You basically buy lots of fuel.
Are you going out to bid for it?
We are going to be going out to bid.
Have we done that in the past?
We have not gone out to bid, what we've done is we've watched, the fuel we've gotten has gotten better, our prices have been gotten better from other towns. I check with Waterford and other things. The problem is, you go out to bid on like one of these consortiums or something like that, it's basically, the only good is the time they bid it, like, so if this consortium's going out this time, that's the price you got. And the other thing is, so the other, fuel is difficult, 'cause the other thing that a lot of these places go out to bid, is they put it on, they put it on an amount over, so the going rate, like you go to the tank right now, it's 260 or whatever, they'll, it's three, it's four cents over the cost, the New Haven cost. The problem is, there's no certainty of that, so if there's a run-up, this town, the budget gets, I've always tried to have fixed prices. Our, our lot of fuel, I always try to check with Burke, check with other towns, but it might end in like, like this year, it could end like in, I just, I think we have 12,000 gallons left in live, it might end in April, so I need a new lot of fuel. So, if you bid that, you have to bid it on that specific day. I'm gonna be looking to bid it, but it's not from a lack of, we've gotten good prices in the past and it's not necessarily that when you always bid it out, but you have to always see what, what everyone else is paying, when they're paying. I look at the fuel, the New York fuel prices every, like, almost every day to see, is there, is it, you know, 'cause it's all about timing.
I understand, it's complex, I got it, I understand that. I just wanted to ensure that we're, we are bidding it, 'cause we're trying to move more towards going out to bid. And any economy scale we can reap on this is gonna be big, because this is a $200,000, over $200,000 line item. So, I just want to ask that we have the appropriate scrutiny for something that's so large.
Oh, I, I would agree.
Okay. My next question is, I'm just, this isn't a question, it's a statement, that the whole payroll line is up 5.08%, which is, I know we're working on it, but I'm pointing it out anyway, $61,000 in increase in that line.
There's, there's an issue with that, that's two years.
Okay, two years, all right.
That's two years, 'cause remember, the, the contract wasn't approved for 11 months.
Okay, but this is last year's, right? So, it's 5.08 from last year to when the contract was settled, so right.
Because what happened is, in, in June of 2017, wages, so the contract had expired in June of 2016. The contract with this group wasn't agreed upon until June of 2017. So, on July 1st, 2017, they were getting two years' worth of wages, they were getting 16, 17, and 17, 18, so that's why there's a 5% difference there.
Mm-hmm.
We're, we're doing that, we're doing, I know the board is very concerned and we've been doing that on the union negotiations.
I'm just gonna keep saying it until I see something different.
But the problem is, you see the percentages here.
This was up to, this was up to, and like I said, their contract expired, their union, their contract expired June 30th, 2016. We didn't have an agreement with them until June, at the very end of June of last year, so, you know, they had two years' worth of salary increases to get at one time.
But if we look at last year's budget, it wasn't a 0% increase on that line item?
It was.
It would've been.
Because, because if we don't have a contract settled, all that money's sitting in...
Contingency.
Payroll contingency.
Yeah, the wage contingency.
I'm pretty sure that was there.
So, it sets zero there, it would've been money in that wage contingency, but we didn't spend it. That first year for, we carry it over for the second year.
Okay.
In 5%.
'Cause if you look at, if you look at the June 17 actual expense, it was actually $1,230,000.
Mm-hmm.
And if you look at the adopted budget for this year, it was $1,208,000. That's because when we did the budget for this year...
Oh, it wasn't approved.
It, it, we didn't know what those wages were gonna be yet, because they were only done in June. But what happened is, we got them in just in time, so that we could get them paid in 17, so that kinda, I guess, tells the story a little better for you.
But the amended budget is $1,269,000, so that's where we transferred salaries from the contingency fund into that, correct?
In, so, right, so this year's budget, so...
So, you're going really, so you're not going from $1,230,000 to $1,208,000, you're really going from $1,230,000 to $1,269,000.
Because, because the adopted budget was, was in theory, the, let's see, the 630,16 wages, because when we worked on this, this current year's proposed budget, we didn't know what the 16, 17 wages were gonna be, nor did we know what the 17, 18 wages were gonna be, because that contract that began on July 1st, 2016, didn't get adopted until June, say, 24th, 2017.
And at the end of the year, the money that was in contingency wages was almost zero?
It was transferred, it was transferred, yeah, it was.
So, we, so our contingency fund for the budget, for the payroll was about right? Our assumptions that we put in that contingency budget were comparable to what really happened?
Now, next year, 'cause this, this, this 5% reflects what they've already gotten, because we're going into contract negotiations, it's a zero, the money is sitting in wage contingency, correct?
Mm-hmm.
For this, for this group, for the highway club.
Right.
Because we don't know what they're gonna get paid next year, because we haven't settled the contract.
But like, if we take the actual expense for 18 and compare it with the budget for 19, it's really a 3.15% increase, not 5.08. I mean, so if we look at it, right? In other words, we're not doing it off the adopted budget, because the adopted budget didn't have the legit, didn't have the new payroll number yet.
The percent increase of 5.8 is done on the adopted budget.
Right.
Because we're showing, we're, you know, when we do our proposed budget, we're showing the difference between the adopted and what we're proposing.
I know, but if you look at the change between the actual expense in 17 and the adopted budget, or the presented, or whatever the hell it is, proposed budget for 19, it's 3.15% increase.
It's a lower percent, right.
It's still too high. It's just still too high. I'm just gonna keep saying it, cause it's still too high. The other comment I have is longevity. So is longevity, just help me out with this, Mark. Is longevity for union employees or for department heads? Unaffiliated. It's for both?
Right?
So are we looking at that? I mean, I'm not familiar.
Looking at all items in the contract.
Yeah, but I mean.
Careful backwards.
I understand that, but, but unaffiliated employees, I don't even understand.
We're reworking the contract currently with the unaffiliated employees.
Do you sign a contract when you come onto work here?
We don't sign a contract, but we're a, a group that's represented, just not represented by a union.
I, I'm continually flummoxed by this. I, I just.
Joe's working at Stonington and we say, geez, Joe, come work for us. This is what we'll give you. This many sick days, we retire, we're gonna give you this. Uh, you'll have longevity pay whether you're here this long, we're gonna give you this, this, and this, this. Will you move your career to Eastline?
Yeah.
That your family of five, do you support?
Okay.
And he looks it over. It's agreement with the town and the employee. He says, okay, I'll come over.
Okay.
We have an obligation to that employee.
But there's no union involved in it?
That's correct.
So you could modify going forward if you wanted agreements with.
And they can unionize tomorrow.
That's what I say. Typically, if you give non-union, if you don't give non-union people the same benefits as union people, it motivates them to unionize.
Well, plus the, the, the group has actually been told a lot of times that we get the same benefits as a union. There's four unions. And, you know, if you have a new employee, we just had a new chief, we had Sandy, uh, we have new people. When they come in from a professional organization, you have to, these are your benefit packages, not, you get what the union gets. So it really has to be identified a little bit of what an employee gets when they're coming in, whether in the union or not.
Right, right.
They're not nothing. They're, they get something.
When you're unaffiliated, you're on a salary, there's a little bit of, you know, you're not punching a time clock, you get different benefits, you're paid higher, all of that, right? It's not the same, it's not an hourly wage.
It's.
We used to call them, where I worked, exempt and non-exempt from labor laws.
Correct, correct. I'd have to look at the list, but I think everyone's salaried.
Okay. All right. That's all I have.
That's it?
Well, just to your point, Lisa, though, I mean, that was a conversation that we had last year, and that all new employees that would be hired from that point forward would, their, their employment contract was going to have a fresh look and feel to it. We did discuss that last year. So I think the question is, did we follow up on that?
Yep.
So.
We're not ready to release it yet. It's gonna go to the Board of Selectmen, I think maybe tomorrow night. And then you'll, you'll have an opportunity to understand what it's gonna look like.
Okay. So where I work, I'm always accused of treating company dollars as if they're my own, because I'm very tight with my money. I'm very pinchy about everything. It's clear to me by everything that we've asked you, that you do the same thing, that, that you look at your budget very serious, um, and we appreciate it.
Yep.
I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. I'm a taxpayer as well.
Number one oh nine, no, we just appreciate the fact that when we probe and we ask you these questions, ninety-nine percent of the time, you got the answer. You don't have to dance. You don't have to, I mean, it's, it's a fact-based. We may disagree with the approach, but I mean, you clearly think about what you're doing. So with that said, I'm ready to move on to number one oh nine, information technology.
Again, another, excuse me, another budget that doesn't have a lot to it. Um, I, I, if you asked around, I did a poll of a lot of towns, I don't think you're gonna find a lot of towns that have one IT person. Um, that's what we have. Um, how we supplement that is we have a, a, um, a contract in the maintenance of office equipment. There's a thirty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollar contract on an annual basis with Stark Computers, a local, a local engineering firm. They did, gave us a fabulous rate, um, and we negotiate that with them. Um, they're, they're there as to, um, to supplement and, uh, they have a lot of expertise on all the things and keep all the different systems going. There's twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars of this thirty-one, two fifty is paid by the town. Ten thousand is in the police budget that I believe you guys are gonna be hearing sometime this week, maybe. Um, uh, we are struggling a little bit, just because, um, you know, that, there is a lot of usage. Um, you know, we, we have a bigger need now with the P, with the PD and we're trying to balance that as best we can. We work very well with them, but we're trying to support them, but there's a lot of, um, not only computers, a lot of requirements. The PD has dispatch, dispatch now. Um, you have cameras, computers in every car, so, um, this, but, you know, here, this budget's up one percent, one point two percent, and really the only thing that's up is, is the salary, so I'm pretty proud of what we're trying to do here. Um, Bill Shear is, when I say there's only one IT professional, that's not correct. Bill, Bill's our other go-to guy doing stuff if we have to wire stuff or do stuff, so I think we're pretty lucky to keep this stuff and this is a pretty low budget, um, to keep all the systems going in this town.
Okay.
That's my.
Questions from the board, Lisa?
None.
None. Um, Jason?
No, I, I agree. This is a, to keep all, everything running is, you guys do a great job for this amount of money.
Okay. John?
No, I'm set.
Anne?
I'm all set.
Come here.
All set.
We're good. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Thank you.
One twenty-six, Board of Finance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board of Finance, who's gonna talk about Board of Finance?
I was gonna cut this budget.
Think you should.
First thing I go out with. No, this is, I mean, we don't, I'd be surprised we have to spend any time on this. We did bump up the telephone recording secretary. Our, our meetings have been going a little longer and need to put those hours in. Um, and that's really it, holding the line on audit servicing and, uh, um, I know that Harney negotiated a lower number with our auditors. Was that for a one-time deal or was that? Yeah. Term of the contract, so. We'll stay with thirty-five thousand. And that's it.
Questions from the board?
Just have one question. Um, how long have it, the auditor is RSM, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. How long has, has that company provided auditing services for the town?
So this is the second, um, time we're doing a contract with them and so it's been five, six, I think seventeen.
Okay. There's some thinking out there about, you know, changing auditors every so many years. Is that, is that conversation taking place or are you happy or with them?
So the Government Finance Officers Association, um, they have actually, you know, released opinions on that, that it's okay to keep the same auditors, because typically they have fresh staff, um, that get assigned to you on a year-to-year basis. So, um, you know, they don't, they don't, I mean, they don't necessarily take, take that, um, opinion, so. But we do, we, you know, do do RFPs for the services.
Okay.
And how many, just to give Anne some perspective on the limited number of, uh, firms that actually provide these services, how many responses did we get?
Yes. So we had, um, two, you know, two, two fi, two.
Okay.
Two firms, yeah.
RSM and somebody else, right?
Well, I'm Shapiro.
Yeah, okay. All right. It's just something to keep in the back of our heads as, as.
Another year or two?
Yeah. So we, we have, um.
Is it three year?
We did three with up to two additional years to renew it, so.
Yeah. It's just something to keep in the, in our heads somewhere, you know, just in terms of really having, um, good oversight that's fresh, you know, that's got a little, little perspective or whatever, so. Okay, thanks.
Other questions? This printing costs here, is this just for these books or is that all printing for the year?
It would, um, generally be, um, the cost of, um, printing the books and, uh.
I ask that because I don't see postage and I was just kinda curious as to whether or not our weekly pack, or monthly packages are included in this budget or if they're covered under some other budget.
It's covered in the first selectman's budget.
Okay, so we can, so we can get more, we can get, um, bigger packages more frequently. All right. Hearing no other questions? It's not my budget. I don't care. Um, any other questions about the work I have? No, okay. Services to the community, one fifteen. As if everything's not services to the community.
Yeah.
Is there anything specific you wanna say about your, uh?
Really, just would say these are traditionally organizations we've supported. Um, they're typically, you know, I don't know where these numbers come from, other than they, 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 you know, these org, some of them ask, and many of them ask for much more than we give. Um, this is kind of a bare minimum of, of what we should give. Um, it's, the historic property is not at the bottom. I, we shifted that to its own department, um, which would include Sam Smith, and I don't know if we've heard them already.
Is that here?
Do we already go through that?
Do we have a department for them?
Yeah, we talked to.
Historic properties?
We talked to one of them.
Yeah.
How many?
Number one thirty-nine.
Okay, we didn't talk about that yet, right?
We talked to one of them, I thought. Well, not historic properties.
No, okay, that's fine. That was what my question was gonna be.
There is a difference between historic properties at zero, of course, that's a zero, but you also see Eastlife Historical Society. That's a different group. They run the Thomas Lee House. They are an independent group that we give a stipend donation to. We don't own the home or, or have to care for the home. The other two properties in town, we do own deed for, uh, and, and have a, a different responsibility, depending on the house you're talking about, of maintaining it. Um, uh, Smith Harris, we are supposed to maintain. It's a town, uh, property and we have a larger budget for that. When we got into the agreement to buy the Sam Smith house, Samuel Smith house, which is on Plantstam Road, just several years ago, we had an agreement with the group that we would pay for the, you know, the fifty percent of the mortgage to buy that and then they would maintain and we would give them a stipend and, and that will be in the historic properties budget. You'll see that next time. But this is, um, um, very typical. As you see, we hold the line here, um, and, uh, would ask for your support on these groups.
Okay. Questions from the board?
One quick question. A ticket that's never balanced.
Sorry?
A ticket that's never balanced.
These checks go out. Every, every one of the checks go out and, you know, in years past, uh, maybe not this year, maybe this year, when you asked me to cut the budget, I, I don't have the heart to cut any of these groups. Uh, you can't. I mean, it's, it's a moral obligation. I mean, beautification is not a moral obligation, but, you know, people do love our downtown.
There's a lot of volunteers.
There's a lot of volunteer groups, the Main Street groups and the cemetery group. My God, unspoken heroes, what they have to do to maintain our old, old, old cemeteries. So there you go. It's really a.
Go ahead.
I just want, make one brief comment. I mean, I, I know money's tight and all that, but, and there's lots of people that are vying for money, but, you know, I am an advocate of Save Futures. I'm on the board. I just think, I'm not asking for more, I don't think, but I'm asking us to consider that this organization supports and helps women in our own town.
Yes.
Who we may not think are affected by domestic violence and sexual assault, because we have a tendency in our minds to urbanize that problem and say it's more predominant with people of color, but I can tell you, it knows no economic boundaries and no racial boundaries. And there are women and mostly women in our town that have been saved by the organization, so should we have, be in a position to add more to that line item? You can bet your bottom dollar, I would support that.
I know you would.
Do you have all these organizations on your list of community services that you're gonna have your, um, I don't remember.
Yeah, that, that was a simple question.
I don't have a question.
The, the, the organization that you're putting together in Town Hall?
The Volunteer Corps.
Is this, all these organizations on that list?
Um, when volunteer opportunities come up, we'll be making, uh, those opportunities available to the list of volunteers. Um, some of them may be on this list. The historical properties were on the list. We have a mailing going out, you know, in the next twenty-four hours. Many of these, no. But yeah, this would be a good resource.
So Save Futures perhaps would be one of the ones that would benefit by having.
Right. I'll, I'll men, mention, you're absolutely right. We, Save Futures serves us, TVCCA especially serves us, um, uh, SACCEC, um, I don't know how, Sexual Assault Crisis Center of Eastern Connecticut. Give, they give, oh, most of these organizations give us, give us statistics on number of families, like the Family Service Association. Number of families or people that have served in our, within our community and we give them pennies from what they give us.
I know, and I know money's tight. And I think that, if I'm not mistaken, Save Futures sends us a letter every year asking the town.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And they do give some statistics in that letter. I, I just wanted to point it out.
Oh, yeah. It's well done.
Yeah.
Your group has come a long way as far as, um, really the follow-up and, you know, when someone makes a donation, the follow-up and it's, yeah, it's, uh, it stands out, actually.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on one fifteen? Hearing none. Um, public discussion, seeing no public. Um, I think we can skip past that one. Um, board comments. Anybody that would like to speak about anything that was on the agenda tonight or would like to be discussed in future agendas?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I, um, so Department one thirty-nine, which is the Historic Properties Commission, um, you have not met with anyone from that committee yet, nor is anyone scheduled, um, for your meeting on Thursday. So, um, we do have a special.